Are you ready? Good morning. This time I'd like to call the order for public hearing regarding the proposed TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue redevelopment project and area. The time is 10:04 Tuesday, January 15. So, the purpose of this hearing is to -- the village is proposing a new redevelopment plan for the area. The purpose of this hearing is to present that redevelopment plan to the general public and to take any issues or concerns raised by the public into consideration in relation to implementation of this plan. So, we're going to go through some matters, review some documents with you, and then at the conclusion, we'll invite each member up if you so choose to give any input that you may have. Next, we're just going to briefly review the steps that have occurred that have gotten us to this point today. In compliance with the Illinois TIF Act, on Tuesday, November 13th, the village adopted an ordinance setting the date, place, and time of the JRB in public hearing. Thursday, November 15th, the village now notes that the JRB in public hearing be a certified now to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity as well as all the affected taxing districts within the proposed TIF area. On November 30th, 2018, the village now notes the availability of the eligibility study and reports the redevelopment plan and project to all residential addresses within 750 feet of the proposed TIF boundaries. On December 6th, the JRB meeting, the Joint Review Board meeting, was called to order and it was continued to December 10th. And on December 10th, the JRB completed its review and adopted an affirmative recommendation that the village implement the proposed redevelopment plan. On December 20th, the village published its first notice of public hearing in the Dailysouth House. Also on December 20th, the village now noticed the public hearing via certified now to all taxpayers of record for all pins located within the proposed TIF area. Village also on December 20th now noticed the public hearing to all residential addresses within the proposed TIF area. On Thursday, December 27th, the village published its second notice of the public hearing in the Dailysouth House. On Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, the JRB recommendation was filed with the village. It's filed with the village. And then today, January 15th, we're holding public hearing. Okay. As I just stated, on January 6th, the Joint Review Board filed its recommendation with the village. I have a copy of the resolution. If anyone from the public would like a copy, you're more than welcome to obtain a copy. What the resolution states, and the Joint Review Board is made up of all the affected taxing districts within the area. So, that is any governmental entity that levies a tax on the affected property, and they propose the Joint Review Board. It states where does the Joint Review Board convene pursuant to the Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. It did meet on December 6th and December 10th and was attended by comprised of representatives of certain affected taxing jurisdictions of the proposed TIF 7 Steger Road Redevelopment Project Area, as well as a public member as provided under the Act. On December 6th, a public member of the Joint Review Board was duly selected by majority vote of the taxing district president, and serving on the Joint Review Board, and a chair person was also duly selected by the members of the Joint Review Board by majority vote. On December 10th, the Joint Review Board carefully reviewed and considered the public record, planning documents, and proposed ordinances relating to the proposed TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Project Area, including the proposed redevelopment plan and program and the eligibility findings prepared by the powers. And whereas after due consideration of said matters, the Joint Review Board agreed by a vote of the members present that the proposed TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Plan and Project Area be approved, that the TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Project Area satisfies the eligibility criteria defined in the Act, that the Village of University Park, TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Project Area qualifies as a conservation area for improved properties and blighted area for unimproved vacant properties as such terms are defined in the Act. Finally, that this TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Plan and Project Area as presented conforms to the requirements of the Act. Now therefore be a resolved by the Joint Review Board as follows, and then they state the recommendation. "The Joint Review Board does hereby submit its advisory non-binding recommendation to the President and Board Trustees of the Village of University Park that (1) the Village of University Park, TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Project Area satisfies the requirements of the plan;[364.69][364.69](2) Village of University Park, TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Project Area meets the eligibility criteria defined in Section 11-74.4-3 of the Act;[378.53][378.53](3) the Village of University Park, TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Plan and Project Area fulfills the objectives of the Act;[388.81][388.81](4) the Village of University Park, TIF 7 Steger Road and Central Avenue Redevelopment Plan and Project Area be therefore approved through the passage of the requisite ordinances." It was then adopted unanimously by the members of the JRB Board present on December 10th here. All right. At this time, we have a member from Ellers, President, who prepares the redevelopment plan, and she's going to take you through the plan, the details of it, and after upon conclusion of her presentation, we'll ask for any questions, comments that you may have.
Hello. My name is Tricia Moreno-Wooflow, and I'm here representing Ellers. We prepare the Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Plan and Project regarding TIF 7. If you all have a copy of the presentation in front of you, I'm going to --
Maybe we have touched on those.
Okay. Thank you. I could probably do it without them. If that's --
Is that okay with you?
Can you guys --
Worry. Can you hear?
Don't need a mic.
Yeah.
Don't need a mic.
Okay. Then that might be a little bit easier for all of us. With that, I'm also going to get him this. So, as I said, my name is Tricia, and we prepare the redevelopment plan that we're presenting here today in front of you. So, page two highlights is a map of the proposed TIF district, and it is bounded by Steger Road on the north, Stunkel and University Parkway on the south, in Cicero Avenue on the east, and I-57 on the west. The area contains approximately 408 acres and includes eight parcels. The land also includes vacant land and some buildings, just a couple buildings. A residential building on the parcel that's located closest to the expressway, and then an additional commercial building south. Moving along, I can spend some time, I don't know how familiar everyone is here with TIF, the TIF program. So, I'll briefly touch over what tax increment financing is. If you need me to spend a little more time on it, I'm happy to do that. So, what the next slide talks about what is a TIF and how a TIF works. It's a tool that's used throughout the state, throughout the country, to help jumpstart sluggish economies. It is also used to attract kind of businesses and help encourage redevelopment within a specific area. TIF can be used for a variety of things. It can be used for infrastructure improvements. It can be used to help rehabilitate existing structures. What it cannot be used for is to build new buildings. However, it can be used to fund improvements that need to be made to prepare the land for a new development. So, what TIF isn't, the next slide talks about, it's not a tax increase. The way a TIF works is a TIF, and actually, if you move to the next slide on page six, it will, it's a graphic that helps, a visual that helps explain sort of how the TIF fund works. So, once a TIF is established, which is the process we're trying to do right now, how the increment is generated, it, this graphic outlines it for you. So, if the property taxes for a particular piece of land was $100 today, and then next year, the taxes increased for a variety of reasons, which taxes generally seem to do, whether or not it's in a TIF, the following year after the TIF is established, that money, the difference between the base year when it's established and any years following after that, is set aside into a fund of money that can be only used for redevelopment within that geographic area. So, it's a way of keeping dollars in the community that can be used for improvements there. So, that's kind of how the TIF fund is established. So, basically, the next slide goes over how the process, as I talked about, for establishing a TIF. You identify the area, geographic boundary is established, and then develop, you draft the redevelopment plan and project, as you said, convene the Joint Review Board, which was done back in December. This started the process of conducting the public hearing, and the next would be to adopt the ordinances. So, I'm going to go through with you on slide eight, the criteria for establishing a TIF You can either, an area can be found as qualifying for a TIF by one of three ways, a conservation area, blighted area, or an industrial conservation area. For this TIF, we use two of the three methods. It was a vacant area and a blighted area. So, it had some improved parcels and some vacant land. So, for the vacant land, there were six parcels that contained in that area, and it met the one factor test for vacant parcels. So, two of four factors must be found present in order for that portion to qualify. So, the factors that we found in that section were obsolete plating, diversity of ownership, deterioration of structures in adjacent neighborhoods, neighboring parcels, and then lacking EAV. So, the EAV there was lagging at a rate that's not consistent with the rest of the community. The next area, the improved parcels, which were qualified as a conservation area, included one parcel in particular that had, one of the two parcels had met the age factor that meant was older than 35 years of age. And the following of the 13 factors that are required for a finding for conservation area, five were found. And so, I'll just briefly go through those with you. Five must be found in the area that six. So, obsolescence again was found, deterioration, excessive vacancy or underutilization, inadequate utilities, lack of community planning, and lagging EAV. So, I am going to walk through the plan, the plans available.
Sure. Could you completely indicate what the acronym may be instead of EAV? Could you actually say that?
Oh, sure. So, EAV stands for equalized assessed value.
And could you do that through your continuing presentation?
Sure. I'm more than happy to. And let me give you a little bit of background about EAV, just so you know how that works for a qualifying factor. The requirement is that the total equalized assessed value of the proposed redevelopment project area has declined for three of the past five years. And then within that, there are three benchmarks. So, you have to meet one of the benchmarks for EAV. And in the area, the total EAV of the improved parcels had declined for two of the past five calendar years. In addition, the total, the equalized assessed value of the improved parcels also increased at a rate that was less than the balance of the village for two of the five years. And again, the EAV for the improved parcels increased at a rate that was less than the consumer price index for all urban consumers for four of the five years. So, because of those findings, we were able to use lack of EAV as a finding for eligibility or the designation. Any other questions on the eligibility factors?
I do have one question before we get into the heart of your presentation, or would you prefer that I wait?
You know, it just, I can wait, but the court was --
Pardon? I just want to know, I can ask my question. It is relevant to what you have presented, what I do not see.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. When you gave on page two of these --
Excuse me. You know what? Just the court reporter can't hear you, so if you can just come to the front.
Hi.
And then, excuse me, and I'd state your name for the record.
My name is Soretta, S-O-R-E-T-T-A, Pat, P-A-T-T-O-N. My concern is with this, you mentioned a lot of areas that met the criteria to what you described, but on your diagram, you did not highlight those areas as far as it pertains to your presentation and how that pertains to this particular diagram. It would have been more beneficial to us, the residents, to know what area actually met their criteria. I don't see that on here. I'm interested in that particular --
It's the entirety of the area that's highlighted.
But she mentioned certain areas. She mentioned literally one area met one criteria, another area met another criteria, but it's not indicated on here what particular area. I know it's concerning the entire diagram, but when you mention specifics, you need to indicate that, and she has not. It's not like the entire area met this aging, whatever she mentioned. The entire area is not meeting this particular criteria that she mentioned. It would be nice for me, and I'm not sure a lot of people would want to know, would this particular area here should be, met the criteria, not the entire lot. You follow what I'm saying? Not all of the acreage is meeting that one criteria that she said we have found in our research that this area. Well, what is that area? Where is it at? I would like to know.
I can, it's the improved parcels versus the vacant parcels, and I can illustrate for you on, after we're done, I can mark off where the vacant and the near-hood are.
I think that would be very beneficial to me in knowing how this all plays out.
Sure. Absolutely. There are two parcels that have buildings on them, and those are considered with one set of factors, and then the rest of the vacant parcels have, are used, there's another set of factors that are used to qualify that. So, I can show for you on the map, for the benefit of everyone else, where the parcels are with the buildings. So, let me just, I just want -- So, the parcels that have, the improved parcels are the parcel right here, adjacent to the expressway, if I put an X on it right here.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
The improved parcels --
The improved parcels are the two pin numbers that I've illustrated here with an X. So, just for the benefit of everyone here, is this parcel here and this parcel here. Okay? Those are the ones that have buildings on them. And so, that when I refer to in the presentation, the improved parcels, it's this one and this one here that have buildings on them, and the rest of them are vacant. Okay. So, back to page 11 in the presentation, we're talking about the redevelopment plan itself, which includes the eligibility analysis, which I talked about, and also, oh, okay, sorry. So, the redevelopment plan, as I said, on page 11, is broken down into these sections. The first section talks about the introduction of the area, what is there, what it includes, the community, the goals. The next section then elaborates more on the redevelopment goals and objectives for the area. It is, will be used for the remainder of the TIF plans life, the TIF, which stands for Tax Increment Financing. An additional section of the redevelopment plan outlines the programs and policies, and that includes the activities that are covered and the cost that are allowed to achieve the goals and objectives of the TIF. The project cost identifies each of the different line items that can be funded with a TIF project, and has dollar amounts associated with each that allows for flexibility over the life of the TIF. So, and lastly, the redevelopment plan also includes a series of certifications and findings that explains that the area has met all of the necessary requirements according to the Illinois Tax Allocation Act. So, if we move on to page 12, this highlights the key findings of the plan, which state that the blighted area factors for both improved and vacant land are reasonably present and distributed throughout the redevelopment project area, that the costs to redevelop the area are extraordinary, and the TIF funds can be spent on projects for properties within the TIF boundary, also that the area as a whole has not been subject to growth and development throughout private enterprise, and would not be reasonably anticipated to be redeveloped without the TIF. Also, that the village certifies that no displacement of occupied residential units will occur as a result in the TIF redevelopment plan. As I stated, there is one property that has a residential unit, but it is not occupied and has not been occupied, that the plan conforms to the comprehensive plan of the village, and that it has passed the buck four test. So, basically, unless there are any other, are there any questions at this time?
I would leave that to public.
I do. I do. As it pertains, yes, Soretta Pat, as it pertains to the area that you have outlined on page two --
Did you state your name just for the record?
I did.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
No worries. I'm more interested in the areas to what you indicated were in need of. There's a lot of loopholes from my perspective in your presentation. You mentioned a lot of terms. You mentioned a lot of research that had been done, but as of today, you haven't been thorough enough, if I may say, because you meant, you outlined an area, an area that needed so much work, but as it pertains to my residence, which is on Steger Road, a lot of this agricultural, a lot of this industrial, and from this, it could have been reimagined, meaning your boundary lines could have been, unless you needed a formal street or road, they could have been reimagined to the point of, you could have moved it back because we do have commercial buildings, we do have agriculture down the way, we do have plants like electrical grids or what have you down where I live at. That has nothing to do with what you're presenting for University Park. I live in Cook County. So, your boundary lines, and this description alone, need to be more detailed. As it pertains to Cook County, we're talking about University Park, and I'm okay with that, if they're okay with that. But as it pertains to Cook County and across the street where I live, has nothing to do with what you just explained. That doesn't exist because we still have homes, we still have agriculture, we have commercial, we have plants, and it seems as though your research could have went back some feet instead of that 40, how many, 408 acres. That could have went back and may have been reimagined. And so, I am, I'm not happy with your presentation in that it's not thorough enough for me because you mentioned areas which University Park truly has, but not when it comes to Cook County.
Right.
I live in a new subdivision, so we have none of that stigma that may be presented here. So, with that being said, no, because of your boundary lines that you have made clear, the 408 acres, maybe it should be 400 acres, which would exclude where all of the businesses are taking place, where we do have people who are employed, where the farms are putting in for agriculture and what have you. Does that make sense? And plus, it's not clearly defined. If you want for me, for me to say, okay, fine, it makes sense, this is not rocket science. This is just acreage that needs to be reimagined to move back enough so it doesn't include Cook County. We have the valid, we have valid reasons for it not being in Cook County, that divide line that you have that you want us to participate in, or you want to extend your finances toward. So, I think your acreage is too much. I think you need to reimagine and do your research closer to University Park, because they truly need the help, yes. I'm in agreement, but this doesn't make good sense to me, and this is not rocket science. And so, to be reimagined, to be more succinct in what you're saying and presenting, you talk about 23 years. They need the help. It's right in front of you. As far as Cook County, we already have it going, it's already in place. We're doing what we need to do. We should not be included in a projection that could not be funded with what you're saying. That doesn't mean our practice, that's not us.
So, to be clear, that area is University Park, it is not Cook County?
Well, from what I understand from the letter that I received that you explained, it does include me because I received a residential letter.
Well, you're within 750 feet of the boundaries. All I'm saying is that boundary is within the boundaries of University Park.
So, my question to you, sir, would be what effect would that have for the Cook County side? Because according to, according to what I read in my understanding, is that this is to impose a joint venture between both counties, Will and Cook, to where I will be assessed additional in property tax for a reconstruction proposal of another county.
No. This is completely within Will County. It will not correct, Tricia.
Yep. So, if you received a letter, so did you receive a letter?
Yeah.
You received a letter that said, can I, you don't, I don't need to know specifically, but I assume that your residence is north of that yellow area?
Correct.
Okay. So, what if, Illinois requires by law that if you are designating an area a TIF district, that it's imperative that everyone who lives in the surrounding community is made aware of it. It has no direct impact on your parcel other than we are required to notify you that the area, so it's, you take a line, and you draw about 750 feet around that boundary, so that you're aware of what's going on. So, other than you being notified that the TIF is happening, it has no true bearing on you -- um, it has no true bearing on your property.
So the language that, if I may, the language that was explained and why I'm here today and I took off of work, it didn't say that, from my understanding. I'm just talking about my perception and reading all the wording, is that it wanted to involve my participation in this particular venture that you have. Because if the wording had not said, Cook County resident, 750 feet proposal, blah, 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 I wouldn't be here today. But if it had said, just a presentation of, the language that was used was not effective enough for my, for me not to be here.
I, 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 um, I, well, and I will tell you, the, the language that is presented in the letter is what, what is part of dictated by the TIP Act that tells you you have to specifically say this and this and this. And unfortunately, it probably is not as user friendly as it could be, but they have, you are required to state the information in such a manner.
And I respect that, thank you. But now, as it here today, moving forward, what can be implemented to reassure the residents that's on the north side of Stega Road won't be pulled into this TIP venture to have any type of effect on our property taxes or any increase that we are not experiencing right now in Cook County? Is what I'm saying is how is Cook County going to be gracefully not included?
Well, those boundaries, so under the TIP Act, we cannot amend these boundaries from what's on that paper without having further hearings and further notices. So with what you've been noticed, that designated area does not include Cook County.
Can we have that in writing, sir? Because if I have something tangible.
It is in writing, right there. The, 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 that land is not in Cook County. It, it's, it's, the jurisdictional boundaries, it, it, you can, it, it just, land is in Will, land is in Cook. That is not, that is not Cook County. And so because it is not Cook County, it, it will have no impact whatsoever on any residents within Cook County.
Thank you, that's public record, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi.
Appreciate your time.
Oh, anytime. Can you just state your name for the record?
Sure. Uh, Juan Porter. I'm also a resident of Greenfield subdivision. And I mean, obviously here today to make a couple of comments and ask a few questions again regarding to, as the young lady had mentioned before, a lot of residents, I'm also, I'm sorry, I'm also, uh, Richland Park Economic Development Commissioner, as well as I'm president of the Greenfield Single Family Homeowners Association. So therefore, we had our budget meeting last night, and we were obviously going to have some representation here today to discuss, obviously, the, uh, proposed TIP. Couple of comments. Uh, I, we clearly understand, and we discussed this at our budget meeting last night, that, uh, the TIP is within the boundaries of Will County, University Park, won't have no direct impact on our tax structure or affect anything when it comes to, uh, Greenfield subdivision of Cook County. Uh, but the residents did get the letters in the mail, a lot of the residents did, because we are within the 750 feet boundaries. We clearly understand, again, from HOA perspective, how TIPS work and, you know, the 23-year, uh, uh, plan there for the TIP. Uh, you all have already done some improvements to that property across, uh, Greenfield subdivision. We've noticed that over the last couple of years, it's been sewage improvements, um, as well as when they inputted the, uh, put the, um, interchange off of Snuggle Road. A lot of that got improved, our streets and everything, because, uh, Stega Road is a county line road, obviously. The concerns that we have is homeowners in Greenfield subdivision, traffic coming up and down Stega Road. Uh, we, our question was initially, would there be any other access to that TIP? Uh, maybe on the Cicero side or even to the Central Avenue side, uh, therefore, because we're, we're just concerned with trucks coming up and down Stega Road that, you know, uh, could, uh, uh, sort of tear up the, the street there. Because we just had that street improved a couple of years ago, and, uh, that's a major concern of ours, because that's our only access into our subdivision. Uh, and again, if this, the improvements or part of the plan here is to put up new structures and more commercial, uh, properties there, will they, uh, you know, what are the plans, again, for keeping that improvement and making sure that those, uh, uh, that that road doesn't get decimated there with the increase of traffic on that road? Now, that's the first question, is there any plan in place for that? The second question.
Why don't we answer that question, then you can follow up.
First, my name is John Payne, Village Management Director of Public Safety, uh, Village University Park. Uh, that's a very good question. Uh, the TIP is in its infancy. We currently do not have a redevelopment plan with any developers right now to, uh, expand on that property. What I will say is, uh, your remarks are duly noted, and when these plans are in place, I will have extensive conversations, uh, with the developer as far as their plans and our engineers being involved, our road engineers and our village engineers being involved in regards to looking at that property. Believe it or not, uh, Stega Road, that county line road, uh, the other side of it is University Park, so it does affect us as well, you know? So we will, I can't tell you what, uh, any egresses or egresses at this time because we don't have any formalized plans of development. But at that point, we will be doing appropriate planning. And that would consist of, number one, if that road is part of you, you, with our village engineer ensuring that either, uh, something goes on with the road to make the road stronger, to handle, uh, large, large vehicles going on the road or have a different engine to exit, uh, for, for that area.
So, and just to build on what, uh, Manager Payne stated, any, any substantive proposals will also have to go through the zoning planning process, which will have its own hearing. And, um, issues related to ingress and egress, as I'm sure you know, are traditionally handled through that process, and, and all those concerns will undoubtedly be taken into account.
Second question. Again, uh, dealing with, uh, the reasons, you know, we clearly understand why the reasons, a lot of the residents in Greenfield subdivision got the letter in the mail. And as the young lady had mentioned earlier, uh, we just want to be assured that, again, it will, um, not only environmental effect, but it won't affect our, uh, our tax structure at all. I do clearly understand how TIPS work, and it is within the boundaries of University Park. Uh, but again, uh, residents came to us, the HOA first, and they went to the village of Richland Park with their concerns that it will not affect their taxes. And again, like the young lady had mentioned, uh, if any assurances, uh, with the letter like you all sent out, uh, to, uh, to address, again, the properties that were within those 750 feet boundary, if you can send something out to, again, assure them that they do not have to, their assessments will not be affected. And the reason I'm asking that is because a lot of our residents in Greenfield subdivision are already fighting and appealing their tax, uh, property taxes now. And when they receive that letter, a lot of our residents did get kind of fearful that, uh, you know, their appeals would be denied and that their taxes will go up because of this planned TIP. Again, we understand at the board, near HOA board, that it does, that a TIP will not affect our taxes, but if you all could please, send similar letter that you sent out to those residents, because you sent a follow-up letter assuring them, again, that, uh, the tax structure won't be changed in Cook County based off this, uh, proposed, uh, TIP plan.
So, so I would tell you, tax structure will not be changed, and I can talk to council and see if we can come up with something. The only thing I cannot guarantee is your home values going up.
Sure, yeah.
So, and that affects your EAB as well.
Right.
So, uh, you know, so I can't write in certain that taxes won't go up because your home values go up, then of course, that adjusts with your taxes as well.
Well, yeah, right, it would be something because of the TIP.
Yeah, again, we're not, we're, I think what the residents were concerned was, it's not that, you know, we, we, we want our values to increase, and of course, all those adjustments happen annually, uh, during assessment period, but the residents were fearful that because they got the letter, particularly the ones that got the letter, that their taxes will go up. And again, maybe some letter explaining how the TIP works, and again, it's only zoned for that particular area that you all had mapped out here in University Park. Not saying that, again, you can't guarantee that our values will never, our tax assessment will never go up, uh, but again, at this particular TIP, will not directly impact any of our, uh, Cook County or, or our zoning here for our HOA. That's all. Uh, just a similar letter to what you all sent out informed us about the views and the whole, uh, plan there for the TIP.
The manager and I will raise it with the board at the next meeting about sending out a follow-up letter.
All right.
And the, the only thing I would add to that is that, you know, the area south of, I, your area is residential, and south of the development that is, that would most likely occur would not be residential development. And so therefore, you know, commercial real estate is assessed at a different rate than residential. So there, you know, there's also some comfort in knowing that it's, it's, uh, commercial based.
Yeah, but again, the letter, and again, like the young lady has stated, the letter did invoke some fear, uh, into some of the residents. So again, uh, as we've been answering questions since they got the letters here as a board, uh, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, if that's something you all can do and, uh, to help reassure them.
And it's the, you know, just to, to maybe, it is unfortunately the letter that does go out all over, and you're not the only residents who have ever, you know, I mean, TIP, I mean, even, I'm sure you get the same with the Richland Park tips.
Absolutely.
You get the same questions, um, whenever it is, when you're adjacent to it, an existing project, a future project.
My name is Barbara Knowles, and I am in Richland Park, too. My backyard is Stega Road, so I'm facing an empty field, which is, you want to, uh, develop commercially? My concern is what's going to go on that property that I, I will be facing, uh, off of my backyard. When, when, when you develop this, what's going to be put out there?
Uh, at this point in time, there's no, um, there's no, there's no project that has been put before the board that identifies exactly what would be constructed there.
Because I'm concerned, like on Cent, like on Central, you have all those, those warehouses, those long warehouses. I do not want to be sitting in my backyard, although I do have a fence up there, but to, to be facing with all these huge trucks. And I, I do know you put barriers up for residential, and that's another thing that, that I don't like because it's just cutting off my whole view of my backyard.
So to be open and very transparent, more likely than not, median square foot backdoor building, backdoor type warehouse type building is what's going to probably be.
It would be warehouse type building?
Yes, just like on Central.
Entering off of Stega Road?
Not necessarily.
No, that, any, what we're just saying is, compared to the other uses in the area, the most, the most, the demand most likely will be warehouse facility type uses. And, uh, as we stated earlier, all, there are no, um, specific concrete plants. When they do come, they, it will be required that they go through the public planning process, and issues of ingress and egress and traffic will be addressed at that point. And, uh, your concerns will, will be the concerns raised at any planning is how, how is traffic going to be managed and directed in relation to these specific.
So since that's a commercial area, there's no, even thinking about residential buildings, homes being built over there?
If, if someone did, it's going to be market driven, whatever goes there. If, if a developer were to come with a proposal and the, and the financials worked, the, the village would entertain it. But as, as the manager stated, if you look at the, the area, uh, to the south of you, most of it is of a, an industrial nature.
If I may only have one, uh, request, Soretta Patton, again. The language that you choose to give this information to the residents, that is more of a layman's term, everybody don't, uh, understand egressing and, 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 you know what I'm saying? Egress and, and get out of the property. But the bottom line is this, if you use language terminology that's more of a layman's term, then it's not fearful. When you don't understand what the term means, when you're coming from an entity with power, resources, it makes a difference on the impact of the message you're trying to get across.
Well, I, I apologize on the letters, as, uh, your colleague there will attest, are, there are very specific requirements under the TIP Act that notices that must be given. So, um, we're not given a lot of leeway in how we convey the message.
I'm not talking about construction.
Here, ingress, egress, just coming, coming and going, in and out of the property.
I understand that, I understand what I'm saying for the letters that you give out, the reason why you had the uproar. It was a lot of language used, terminology that was appropriate, truly in the correct context, but you could use a different term, you could say in and out versus egress and egress. Regardless of that, I'm just saying, when this next letter comes out, could you just get the consideration of using light terms, but at a lower level?
Well, yes, uh, this next letter would be, it's more of a, it's a non-statutory notice, right? We're trying to be good neighbors, so I, you know, when, any letter will not be bound by statutory requirement, so we'll have a lot more ability.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Well, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Now, the next item in, we've pretty much been, the next item on the agenda is to receive written oral comments. We could sort of naturally work into that. I don't know if there, there are any other written or oral comments related to the plan. Seeing that, uh, we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Don't move. All of them. Thank you. Uh, the transcript was created, it's going to be shared with the board members and, uh, and the, and America for consideration, and, uh, we will follow up on your comments. All right, thank you.